There's free donuts over here that are welcome, anyone's welcome to. So if you have ever had a donut or even liked donuts a little bit, please help yourself.
Very good. Thank you all for coming this evening and welcome to the city council meeting. Appreciate everyone being here. It's nice to have the first order of business be a proclamation, but before that, if you would all please stand and join with me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation this evening brought by Pastor Flannoy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God and kind Father, we bow humbly with humble hearts and uplifted spirits thanking you for your many blessings you bestowed upon us. Now we ask that you bless the city council meeting on this evening with your knowledge and your wisdom, starting with our mayor and the city council and their assistants. Remembering our police department, our fire department, our first responders. Let every decision be acceptable in your sight and pleasing to you. And let the citizens of Bonner Springs be the beneficiaries of those decisions. Lord, we ask these blessings and teach us to love one another as you loved us. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And if I could have, please be seated. And if I could have members from the Parks and Recreation Department come forward, please. I do not bite. But it's an honor to, and since I don't, it is of honor to bring the proclamation this evening, which reads, whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Bonner Springs. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs promote health and wellness. And whereas they promote space for popular activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities are critical to the childhood development. And whereas these programs increase a community's economic prosperity. And whereas Parks and Recreation, natural recreation areas improve water quality, improve the quality of the air we breathe and produce habitats for wildlife. And whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation areas provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the city of Bonner Springs recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2023 is Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas. Congratulations. This also recognizes the groundbreaking for the newest park in Bonner Springs. Do you want to introduce that?
Oh, sure. So we are installing a park off of 120 North Nettleton. There's going to be an outdoor fitness court. Actually, they started breaking ground for the installation of the concrete pad for that today. So if you drive by and see construction, that's what's going in there. And actually at tonight's city council meeting, we are proposing a name that council may or may not approve. Of Center Park. Yes, so I'm Justine Spees, Recreation Manager. With me tonight are Recreation Coordinator, primarily over aquatics Nathan Brungart, Recreation Coordinator, primarily over sports Tatum Bartles, our Recreation Intern for this summer Mason Dusky, and Gloria Ochoa, who is the Senior Center Director. Real quick, there is a fun July, a whole entire month of calendar fun that staff worked really hard on. That is available on our website and council. That is what is in front of you, the brightly colored paper there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to our first item of business, which are citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. If anyone would like to stand and address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda, please make your way forward and state your name and address. I'd appreciate it.
Good evening. Mike Thompson, 642 North Nettleton. Looks different from this angle. Reason I've come here tonight is I wanted to personally thank the first responders for Situation 16 June, the mysterious letter, the suspicious letter incident. The first responders came in and I tell you, everybody did such a professional job. And the coordination with Kansas City, Kansas, and with Edwardsville. And I just wanted to say publicly that I thank them tremendously for what all they've done and the professionalism. And also I thank the city for supporting them. They're a good group of folks. The thing that kind of got to me was that my wife and I, we'd spent the day before in the emergency room with my wife. And that next day, she was doing better and everybody was concerned about her and the care that they were taking. So I just want to say thank you and thank you all, every one of you. Everyone was a professional. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to stand and address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move along. The first, the next item is our consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the June 20th, 2023 city council budget work session, minutes from the June 22nd, 23 city council meeting, claims for city operation and appointments to boards and commissions. Anything to be pulled by staff? Anything to be pulled by citizens? Questions or concerns? Seeing none questions from the council? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mrs. Gurley. Vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We get on to our next item, the new business, a resolution determining the disposition of repair or demolition for the structure at 820 North Nettleton. Staff.
Good evening, council members. Here we go. Hale Warek, Assistant City Attorney. The purpose of tonight's hearing, I suppose, is a status update on this property. The last time the council met, it adopted a resolution finding that the structure located on the property is dangerous or unsafe. And it set this next council meeting to determine whether the owner of the property had made sufficient progress, either by commencing work to make the property safe or by making diligent progress towards that goal. Unfortunately, at this point, we don't really have enough, I personally don't have enough information to make a staff recommendation about which side the council should fall. I think the council should hear both the sides from code enforcement and from the owner to determine if they would rather allow the owner more time to meet the goals set out by the council. Or if the council would prefer to authorize city staff to solicit bids to allow the city to do the work themselves. At this point, I turn it over to code enforcement officer.
How are you guys tonight? There has been a little bit of progress done up to the building. It hasn't been... Part of the back of the building has been taken off, left in disparate stages of rubble in the back. Are we just doing the 820, or, okay, that one. Yeah, there has been some part of the building taken off. I think you have some photos from there today. The whole back added-on section of the building had been taken off and left in the yard. Hasn't been secured. The top door up there, as you can see, is open, no door on it. The bottom part is totally open for anybody or anything to get inside there. This is a view from behind, looking up at all the debris from it, just scattered throughout the yard. That's pretty much where we're staying.
Right, thank you.
I don't have much to add. I would just say that Mr. Tyner has been doing some work. As you can see, he's torn off part of the building that he referred to as being dilapidated in his knowledge. But again, the site is just kind of left in shambles. But he has made limited progress on it.
Mr. Tyner, do you have anything to add?
The foundation and the back part of the structure was, it had rotten floor joists. I mean, it had rotten sill plates and the cement blocks weren't slugged. So we determined it wasn't, you know, wasn't safe. So we took that part off the back of the building. I talked to Dennis Tuck, who is an architect and was going to come out and look at, you know, look at this. And he was supposed to talk to Mark Manville, and they haven't made contact yet. I talked to Dennis Saturday, and I talked to Mark Manville, and he said they're still going to make contact and do an inspection of the building. There's a column in the front that's got a crack in it that needs, needs point tuck. And there's an opening in the back that needs point tuck. And a lot of that trash that's in the back of that area gets a lot of trash, you know. But if you see the pictures where we took the back of that building, it's all picked up and it's done. We'll have to go back around that other building and take the brush out. But it's going to take time to do that, and it's going to take, take some money. If you guys, I don't know how quick you're wanting to get that thing done, but it's going, I'm going to need time. And we took the whole back.
So your plan is to continue to improve that building? You believe it's structurally sound?
Yes.
Could you bring back up the pictures, please? It appears that that open area on the first, the basement, that open area?
Yes.
What's above that?
There's a header above that.
Is that rock? A rock?
It's rock.
So that rock wall is supported by that two-by-four with that header? That's not completely across that expand?
That needs to be supported. The floor joists go, you're looking at the building, you're looking from the...
That's an unsecured area too? I mean, anybody could walk right in there? That doesn't appear safe.
The basement of that building is locked off. The top part has...
That's open, right there.
That is open, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the, and the, there's a hatch door from the basement to the top, which is, which is secured. So you can't get in the top of the building. We took everything out of the building.
But that door's open at the first floor, on the first floor?
I don't know how that got open because we had it closed. We get a lot of, we get a lot of...
Don't know how that, you know...
We get a lot of free help in that neighborhood.
And your contention is that's not all the trash from your building?
Oh, that stuff is. The broken pieces of block and stuff. That whole back foundation was taken down and the better blocks were saved than the other, the other...
So the condition of that site, you think it's appropriate?
You mean for occupancy? Probably not.
No, for anything?
Yeah, yeah, for taking that back down and...
That's the manner in which the, that property should look?
Is that a finished condition? Is that what you're asking me?
No, it's not what I'm asking. Good as a...
What are you asking me?
Next picture. Next picture.
That stuff that's down there and behind is not, is not stuff that came from that building.
Oh, all right. That's your contention?
It was all picked, it was picked up. We took all the wall sections off. We loaded them on a...
So that debris there is somebody...
I don't know what that is.
Your contention, that's not a part of your building?
I don't think so. But there's a lot. We've hauled trash out there three, four times. They back in there and put trash all the time. In Kansas City, Kansas, we have property over on 97th Street. We have the same thing happens over there. Well, if you don't want to hear it, don't ask.
No, I don't want to hear about Kansas City, Kansas right now.
Okay, then I'm going to tell you about Bonner Springs. They put a lot of trash out in Bonner Springs, and it's an ongoing problem.
And your contention, your...
I tried to confront the city.
I don't want to, I don't want to talk any more.
You only want to stay on the subject you want to stay on. You don't want to talk about the whole thing. I've been up here how many times?
Your contention is that that debris there is not from your building. Right?
I, do you think it's from the building?
Yes.
That's good or not? Any other questions?
I don't have any other questions for you right now. Nothing else?
Do you want to do a motion on it before we start?
Yep, that's...
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to solicit bids for the removal of the structure located at 820 North Nettleton.
Second. So moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Let's start right down here with questions, concerns, comments?
My biggest concern when we had our last meeting was the stability of that structure and the safety of it. And that's one of the things I asked for is, could you get a structural engineer, somebody in there to go in and confirm that that building is structurally sound? And here we are, and we received nothing. And I, on the memo we got, the last paragraph on the first page talks about the column on the northeast corner of the building is failing and has pulled away from the rest of the building. The column no longer supports the lintel above the store front window in the east wall. And anybody speak to that because, I mean, that sounds like there's a structural problem. Please, if you could, sir.
That column needs to be point tucked. Dennis Tuck needs to come out and look at it. And Mark Manville said he would inspect it once a report was made and he, and there were determinations made. And Dennis would, would draw those determinations up and Mark Manville will inspect it. I spoke to both them.
When were they planning on inspecting this?
I talked to Dennis Saturday, and he said, "Guy, you know how busy I am." And I said, "I know how busy you are, but they're wanting me to get, you know, get you to look at it." In fact, yes. And, and he, he said that he talked to Mark Manville. I haven't got a call, and I didn't call him today. We're cleaning up property at Kansas Avenue, and I was up there on that all day today.
Thank you, Mr. Tyner.
But those things, you know, that, that back, that header that you mentioned in the back of that building, there is going to be those floor joists, like I was saying, you, we were standing, looking to the east on the back of that building. And the floor joists run north and south in that building, so those are supported. That back wall is going to need to have, probably have a steel beam put up there to support that. And when the plan's made, it'll have to be decided whether that's going to be a garage door, what kind of opening that's going to be. But the floor joists that support that building go north and south, and they are soft when you're in there. They have a lot of bounce in them. They're actually 14 by, two-by-14s, full dimension lumber. And, and there'll probably be some requirement for those to be, to be either doubled up or beefed up also.
Any other questions?
I just worry that young people are going to get in there, and if it's this dangerous, it's a terrible thing there. And I, once again, I say, people coming into Bonner, if that's the first look they get at it, we ain't much.
What's the future plan for that building if you're able to restore it?
The, the, the city adopted a deal that, that is R2, which is duplex or single-family, that area. That's what that's going to be. I think it needs to be some, some commercial setting. At one time, they tried to put a Dollar General in on the five acres next door. And I own property north of that, and I, and south of that too. I own a lot of property there. There's a plan that we had to put in, in, in place. But we were going to redo the little duplex down below and get it functional and get this thing functional until we got a final plan. It just didn't, evidently it loses, and I knew that when I bought the building. But I, at, at some point, when you don't occupy a building, it loses its status.
That building's not on...
And that was duplex, and it was a commercial building, the old-style commercial building like you had in Bonner Springs, where you lived in the back of the shop and you ran your business out of the front, is what that building was here for years.
And it's currently not on sewer line, correct?
No, it's not on sewer. And that's one of the things that I mentioned. There's a septic that's involved with that and that little duplex down there. And there, the sewer is all the way down on Lakewood and goes diagonal and comes up and touches 130th Street. And that sewer line would have to be extended up that way to do anything. We own a house at Lakewood and, and 947, 40 or something, I can't remember. But we own a house back there, and it has sewer that comes off that line. So sewer can be, can be picked up and done there. It's going to be expensive, you know, to do. Well, I mean, all sewer, when you put sewer mains in, they're expensive. And there's a lot of rock in that area, so it's going to be there. And you guys did a sewer project from, from the Pentecostal church down to, that connects into that back. That's a main, a main sewer line that goes in there. And, and it was expensive putting that in because of the rock.
And it's currently...
So it can be done. There's just going to have to be some money spent to make that happen.
And the zoning is currently reverted. What's the zoning on it now?
Uh? I'm sorry.
I'm not sure what the, I know the zoning reverted back because it was not occupied. I wondered what the zoning is right now.
The zoning right now, it, it's duplex or, or, it's single-family is what it is. Residential, excuse me, residential. It's not apartments. It's, it's a single-family and duplex, I believe. But there's a lot of potential for that corner, but we, we got to be able to get to it.
It just hasn't been a priority and...
No, it hadn't been.
When you talk about it taking time and money, that makes it feel like less of a priority because it's just going to drag on for years and years.
It's what?
It feels like it's just going to drag on for years and years because it hasn't been a priority.
If I were you, I would think the same thing. But then, we can't talk about the history of when we tried to make that thing work because it's not legal in government to talk about the history and why we haven't got to where we should be. I've tried to talk about it several times. "Oh, you can't talk about the past." Soon as I go into the bank and I say, "I'm going to put up a 12plex," I say, "What's your, what's your rent? What's your, your rent today? I mean, how much, what's your occupancy rate today? And what was it a year ago?" So those questions are asked of me and expect me to answer all the time. You guys don't answer those. It has taken a while. I came, I got that piece of property. I got the one across the street. I own almost all the way down to, I own, there's one small lot in the middle that we go all the way down to Lakewood. And down by the little house where the electrician is, I got three lots down there. And it was part of the plan we were doing. We never got to complete the plan. I mean...
Why didn't you?
And you know, people come to me and say, "Guy, how come we don't have more residential in Bonner Springs? Why don't we have those projects going?" Soon as you start speaking about what it takes, they shut you down.
I'm less concerned about new build as, when we're talking about this particular, this property that's been allowed to fall into this situation.
Do you want to talk about this? The duplex back behind? Seven, eight years ago, I came and tried to get a permit so we could get, keep people in that and keep that thing occupied and then do something with that building. They said it lost its status. So at that time, I guess it should have been torn down. Is that correct? Should that have been my...
It shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have been allowed to fall into the state that it's in currently.
Well, if it can't be done, then maybe you guys need to say, "Tear it down." I mean, if nothing can be done with it, you don't feel it's an asset to the community, then maybe you ought to throw, throw the towel in, let's get her done. I don't think that's what, as a citizen, I don't think that's what should happen.
If you, if it was important to you, you would have pursued it and done something about it, not just let it sit there.
You know how many things I'm pursuing?
Sorry?
We can't talk about it, but you know how many things I'm pursuing? I'm a one-horse operation and...
That's not my problem.
Well, it's, it's my problem when I come to the city and they turn me down and don't allow me to go forward with things. And they don't spend the time to listen to, okay. Then that's, that's, if you guys are going to do it, don't let me waste your time. That's what I say.
If it was important, you would have made much more progress over the last year.
You're right. You're right. We don't need to talk about it anymore.
It's been a year.
Huh?
It's been over a year that these two properties have been...
Oh my God, I've owned that thing ten or 15 years.
It's been specifically in front of the council because of its status for over a year. You have not, you've only made this much progress in the last 60 days.
Am I not making enough progress?
No, absolutely not.
Then that's it. Was there any more thing else to talk about? Is there? If there is anything else to talk about, we're wasting...
There may be more questions for you. Any others? Ma'am?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. You know, this is an important property. Everybody agrees. We don't want it to be dilapidated or torn down. However, I agree with Danny. You've had it 15 years, and there's been little to no progress being made on anything. I wish that, I know that you have a lot going on, but those are also all decisions that you made when you bought all the properties that you have. I mean, you know what you have on your plate. If this isn't a priority, you should have either sold it or figured out a way to bring it up to code. And now we're being faced with making the decision about whether or not it needs to be torn down. And that's a really rough place to be. You do a lot of really great things for this community. But this is one place where an entrance to our community, to Ms. Woods's point, when you're coming in, you see this dilapidated building, when it could be something else. And whether or not the city, or, I don't know if you went to the planning department to get the status changed, but that is a possibility. You can get the status, you know, appeal to get a status change for whatever you want to do. You know this. You've done it many, many times. So to throw up your hands and say, "Well, I was turned down, so I'm just not going to do anything with it. I'm just going to let it sit." I, I'm not sure that's a great spot for you to be in when I know you want that building to stay up. So, you know, it's a really tough place you've put us in tonight.
But I was here last time and they said nothing's happened to that building. We re-roofed that thing two, two or three years ago to preserve it so it could stay there and be done.
But much like the third way, when is that going to happen? I mean, we can't keep having it open.
The backside of that building was removed. The part that was dangerous was removed. It was taken other places and...
And now it's open, and there's doors open, and there's animals probably going in and out, and who knows what's happening, you know? So it's getting to the point where it is a big safety hazard, and that isn't what anyone wants either. And likewise, we don't want it to be torn down, but this is the position we're in right now. And, you know, I'm sorry that you feel like that's the city's fault.
I can list it for sale to see if somebody else is interested in taking it further.
Mr. Mayor, to help, help me with this, I believe and correct me, or anybody correct me, that part of this proceeding this evening was that we were to receive a structural engineering report. And have we received that?
He made mention he talked to a couple of people and they haven't got back to him yet.
That was not what I believe was the information that was given to Mr. Tyner, that we had to have that structural engineering report. And, Mark, have we, have we received that at all?
There you go.
And that's true. You guys asked me to have that, and I got hold of Dennis to make that thing happen, and it did not happen. And there's a lot of things that you're going to ask me that won't happen in the way and the time that you want. And if you guys got an agenda that's way outside of mine, you need to make your decision and let me go.
And we, we've asked for your agenda and plan several times, and have we received any information concerning that? Not that I'm aware of. Any other questions, concerns? Any other questions, concerns, comments concerning this resolution? Vote, please.
Would I like to see the building saved? Yes. And become something very nice, something in history. But the biggest issue is, this is now the third time you've been in front of us. Um, it's been going on, I think, now eight months, something like that. I mean, it started long before this. And every time we keep saying, here's what we need, you come back in, you haven't given that to us. So are we gonna be here in, in July, at the end of July, if we pass the other resolution? And we're still going through the same rhetoric again, because-
You oughta be over here on this side and come in here, ask you guys to get a duplex ready so you can, uh, raise money off that deal and make that project happen. And you get, and you get half-witted comments back to you that you're, they're not gonna let you do that.
Well, right now, we're talking about the building-
Well, then, we are talking about this project, and I went to the dup, duplex as part of this. I went down to the duplex-
Coming up next.
Well, there's, we're, I don't think there's any common ground here. I don't think-
You know, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, vote, please.
Voting on a resolution authorizing staff to solicit bids for the removal of the structure located at eight twenty North Nettleton. Reeves?
I cannot hear you. Read, read that so I can hear it. Read that motion so I can hear it.
Voting on a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to solicit bids for the removal of the structure located at eight twenty North Nettleton.
Okay. Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number two. This is the next one. Resolution determining the disposition of the repair or demolition of the structure at one three one zero one. One three one zero eight Metropolitan. Staff, at eight or nine?
Five.
Five, sorry. Five.
Hail Warek, Assistant City Attorney. To the extent this resolution needs any further introduction, um, this resolution is focused on the other structure located on that parcel of land. Um, the question for the council is whether or not the owner has either commenced work on that structure or diligently pursued that work in order to make the structure safe and sound.
As you can see in the photos on this, there's nothing been done to this one in many, many years. You get people break in, the only progress we ever see is when they have to re-board the windows up after somebody breaks into it. I couldn't make it around the back of it to take more pictures from the back, from the overgrowth and everything, but, um, yeah. Nothing's been done on this structure for, I've been doing this for four years now, and I haven't seen any progress on it in four years.
Any other staff? No? Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Tyner, concerning this duplex property on Metropolitan? I'm sorry, the property on Metropolitan? Thank you. Uh, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to solicit bids for the removal of the structure located at one three one oh one and one three one oh five Metropolitan.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Shannon, seconded by Mr. Reeves. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here with Mr. Shannon. Anything? Any others?
Nothing.
Nothing here.
Seeing nothing else, vote, please.
Voting on a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to solicit bids for the removal of the structure located at one three one oh one through one three one oh five Metropolitan. Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good. Onto item number three, naming of park located at one twenty North Nettleton Avenue. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Justine Spees, Recreation Manager. Um, so before you tonight is the request for the naming, um, of the property at one twenty North Nettleton, uh, where the fitness court is going to be installed. Um, at the April twenty-fourth City Council meeting, you guys passed the governing body policy, uh, GB twenty zero one, um, that allows us to name and what that process looks like for naming. Um, we did take it, or staff took it to, uh, the ROSA Committee, um, during their May session. Um, and they talked about different names, that it could be going along with the theme of like, kind of directionals, um, 'cause we have North Park, South Park. Um, they decided that, uh, Center Park would be a good fit for that, that location. Um, City Manager reviewed the item per the policy. Um, he has now passed it along to you all for your consideration.
Very good. Other staff? Citizens, questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a- Motion to accept the name Center Park as the new park name for one twenty North Nettleton Avenue.
Second. So moved by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Shannon. Uh, we'll start with questions, concerns, comments, right here.
I think it's wonderful that we're doing something there. I love all the parks in Bon- Oh, I'm sorry, I love all the parks in Bonner, and I'm delighted that a new one is happening.
Nothing, I think it's great.
Nothing.
Is it true what I, is it true what I heard that, uh, they were gonna name the park after you?
No.
I mean, Spees Park does have a nice name.
Yeah, I think that, you know, can we change the vote?
No.
It, it does, Center Park does sound a little unimaginative.
Yeah. There were, there was a lot of discussion on the topic and-
I can only imagine, and I pondered it since I saw this was coming up and can think of no real better na- I mean, there's a lot and-
Another name?
Um, uh, did we, did we, uh, think about having a community contest for the name of the park?
Uh, so that was discussed as well. Um, they felt that that would bring up a lot more variety, and then that would actually make it harder for them to narrow it down from there.
As opposed to having a name like Center Park? Um, since North Park is actually in the middle of our city, and one would call the middle the center, but, um-
It's also a fitness Center Park.
Fitness Park.
Okay.
Center Park is working.
Changing the name of North Park because it is a north.
No, no, I was just making the point that, yes.
You mean of the farther north part.
All I know, it's left out, and I wanna bring it back on the platter. We need to be developing it at some point in time, is West Park. Please, we do have another park that's named directionally.
And then East Park and-
Right next to my, unofficial West Park, yeah.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry, you had something to say?
I like the name Center Park.
Oh, sorry.
Well, there you go.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, concerns, comments, vote, please.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Hmm, yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations for lack of a better name. It's now Center Park. Moving along to our number four, the Axon Taser Purchase Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Billy Nath, Chief of Police. Uh, what we have before you tonight is a request to make a motion allowing the Assistant City Manager to execute the Axon Taser Purchase Agreement. Uh, Bonner Springs Police Department has historically deployed Taser devices, uh, long before I got here. As with any technology, that technology changes, and tremendous evolution occurs. Uh, recently, Taser came out with the, what's called the Taser ten. For what comparatively, we, we were carrying the Taser seven, so we're, we're several steps down the road now. During the budget conversations, it was decided to do an outright purchase versus the five-year, uh, purchase agreement plan. And so that's our recommendation to move forward with at this time.
Very good. Other staff, input, questions, concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion authorizing the Assistant City Manager to execute the Axon Taser Purchase Agreement as presented at a total cost of ninety-four thousand six hundred forty dollars forty cents. Second.
So moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mrs. Long. Uh, questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start right here with you, Mrs. Long.
None.
Chief, um, what is the, I know it's, you said it was down, but what is the difference between what we have now? And I'm personally glad you're getting these, but what, what's the difference?
Currently, we are not deploying any Tasers at all. It is something that, uh, was part of the budget last year. We made some decisions, so we don't have Tasers we're deploying currently. Uh, this new device actually has ten separate probes versus traditionally, they've had, well, there's four total. So, um, the technology's kind of evolved. In the old days, if you think of how electricity works, you had to have a plus and a minus. Well, now, they're all pluses and minuses, so it gives the officers, when they're using thick clothing, uh, maybe it's some sort of material that the probes aren't sticking well to, a lot more opportunity to make these devices work.
Great, great. Um, has it, has there been any, um, research or any history on, on the individual that is, uh, highly strung out? Where the Tasers have, I believe, not with us, but with other departments, where they've had to use Taser, and then they use it again, and it didn't seem to slow it down, slow them down, would this afford, if, if this were to happen, uh, be more protection for, for you and our department?
Yes, uh, what the goal of it is, is called neuromuscular incapacitation. So what that is, is basically, if you look at the belt line, we divide the body into two hemispheres, and we try to get one in the top, one in the bottom, and that's what locks somebody up. And you've seen videos on, online where they fall over. That's the goal. Um, it has less physical exertion than if we have to fight them. And the one thing in police work, if we fight, somebody's gonna get hurt, whether it be the individual we're fighting with or the officer. So this is a tool that we can get some distance in some time, and we can prevent that from having to happen.
Thank you.
Two questions. What, is there a benefit to doing an outright purchase versus a payment plan?
Um, yes. So the outright purchase, they're giving us ten thousand dollars off.
Okay.
That's the big difference.
I saw that the, that number was in here. I just did not equate it to the outright purchase. Um, there was conversation at some point about using an alternative to the Taser, the bean bags, the shackles, things like that. It was obviously determined that Tasers were still the best option.
We, we've explored several options. All of our cars do have a less lethal option currently. It, everything's scenario-driven in law enforcement, so there's no perfect solution. Uh, we looked at things like the bolo wrap is kind of what you're talking about. Um, there's Taser gloves. And for what we deal with, we just feel like this is the better solution at this time.
Nothing.
Let me ask that one question that, uh, this Gurley asked about, uh, I thought we, at one time, we talked about some other options. Also, um, the discount, um, there was an average savings per year. What is that based upon, this average savings that's listed in the, uh, the actual, uh, bid?
You know, I, I couldn't probably speak to that as well as Taser could.
I just noticed there was a, you know, average savings per year and a total savings, so I didn't know if it was because-
One, one thing I know they're looking at is if you look on, like, I think it's page two, you'll start to see there's like four hundred cartridges, um, one hundred and forty. So with this program, and we're getting it by buying it outright, we get all that at one time. Um, one of, the purchasing program that was used for the five years, they give it to you every year. So instead, we're just gonna get it all at once, and, and-
Get it all at once, they give you a discounted savings.
Right, and if we just went and bought them otherwise, we would have to buy all those cartridges, all those holsters, all those different accessories.
Did you say that we, we still have some Tasers?
No, we currently aren't deploying any Tasers at all.
Well, I knew you didn't deploy them, but I thought maybe we had some on hand.
No.
Okay, that's, if he wants one.
Do the cartridges have a shelf life?
They do. Um, it just really depends on the cartridge itself. So when you look at this, there's, um, training cartridges, there's also, there's a twelve-degree, and then there's a, I guess, ten-degree, and that's just the angle it comes out. And the propulsion systems in them can go bad, so they say five years.
Is there any downside to us getting all of the cartridges at once rather than spacing it out over the time?
Not really, because Taser, they're really good about within five years. If we have a problem, they just give us a new one. I don't see us using four hundred cartridges. I mean, that's, we've had a bad year, a bad couple of years.
Well, uh, but you could always order more.
Yes.
And that would be additional expense. And how long do you expect this platform to be supported?
This one, this is the newest, this is the latest and greatest, so we're hoping, they, they say Taser has a shelf life of five years before you have to buy a new one. Um, we went to Taser seven when I first got here, so that was six years ago. So we were on the, uh, replacement time anyway.
So that looks like about a five-year useful lifespan. That's what I was, other questions, please, sir?
Yeah, what was the range of effectiveness?
You, we, we always say twenty-one feet. Um, that's generally the rule of thumb. Um, some of these cartridges can't extend that range to thirty feet, so it just really depends. When you're talking about splitting those hemispheres, the farther away you get, the harder it is to hit it. Um, so, um, we also don't wanna be too close, because if we're too close, you're not gonna get that split that we want either. So it's, uh, the Taser device, the other way it can be used is what's called Drive Stun. Um, so not shooting probes and actually touching you with it, and that's just another form of, or technique that we teach.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, vote, please.
Shannon?
What's the motion?
Motion is to authorize city staff to execute the Axon Taser Purchase Agreement with, as presented at a total cost of ninety-four thousand six hundred forty dollars and forty cents.
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, and don't tase me, bro. Couldn't help it. Next item, our city managers' report.
Oops, sorry. I have these flyers for Bonner Blast. They list the food trucks that will be there from five to eight P.M. on this Thursday, June twenty-ninth. Uh, there's also the Patriotic City Band Concert at eight-thirty with fireworks to follow at about nine-fifteen. Um, so we can pass those down if people wanna take one. It's also on our, uh, city Facebook page, the same event, um, information. The fireworks tents, um, they can start selling tomorrow through July fourth. And then you, um, are able to discharge fireworks in the city only on July third and fourth, from nine A.M. to eleven P.M. But not on public property or streets or parks or parking lots. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that.
Might be an opportunity to tase some people.
But they won't have it yet, will they?
No.
Anything else? Nothing else? Very good. Uh, that leads us to city council items, and I seem to always pick on people down here, so I'll start down here with Mr. Shannon.
Well, I wish our first responders that, that nothing happens over the fourth and everything. Um, I'd also, may not be a council item, but I would like to commend, uh- I'd also, may not be a council item, but I would like to commend Mike Thompson. Thanks, buddy. You've really stepped up, and you've been a big help to everybody in this area and what you're doing in the legislature and the contacts that you have. And I'm glad you're there, and that's my own personal view. Chief, thanks for all you do, and any of the other first responders that are here.
Cam?
You didn't mention the residential street tree program where free things are being given out. Does that include Lake of the Forest?
It is.
In case we need more trees.
It is within public right-of-ways. So Lake of the Forest are all private streets, so these would be public city streets that it would be eligible for.
And the public right-of-way is about how far? Is that off of the street or behind the curb or...?
It tends to be anywhere from 5 to 15 feet off from the edge of the street, depending on the street. So we'd have to take each location into account and kind of take into the overhead lines and how much right-of-way is there and what would be appropriate for the site.
Side triangles and all that.
Yep.
And do you have a plan for the rest of the trees? Because aren't there hundreds that have to be planted?
We have 87, I think, left to go of our 200. I know that we removed some from the cemetery, so we're gonna plant some up there, some more street right-of-ways. And if there are any other suggestions where you'd like to see more trees, then we're happy to take those. But we've done a lot of the parks and some of the trails, and then over by the high school along Pratt, we planted a few as well.
Oh, good. Thank you, and if anyone knows of anyone who has a space that might work in the public right-of-way, please let Justine or, I'm sorry, the city manager or Amber, Assistant City Manager, contact their offices. I'm sorry. Right ahead.
Connected to the Bonner Blast, I've seen a couple of people talking about whether or not they would allow parking at the old Thriftway parking lot. My only concern is if people are gonna try to pull up onto the existing pad and any construction debris that is left there. It may be in our best interest to suggest that they provide barriers of some kind to keep people from parking in the areas they don't want them.
I know staff has reached out about that concern, so I'll make sure that they follow up. But I know that they've reached out to the owners.
Right, yeah, it's definitely being talked about amongst the residents, so thank you.
Only one comment. I think there are a few of our residents that have yet to read Facebook, because the last two nights, we've heard a pretty good-sized firework going off. I think this Gurley probably has heard it as well, so... So anyway, if you're down in that area, if the officers are down in the west side of town...
Sorry about that, Paul.
What was you shipping it off?
Taser.
Taser.
It's it. Yeah, I had four people that have asked questions about the new park uptown. I said, "We haven't even named it yet." But, so there is some interest there, people wanting to use that, find out more about it. So I take it there is information on Facebook and wherever else.
Facebook is also in the last city newsletter. So I didn't want to put it on our city website until we had an official name.
Okay, thank you. Good job. That's it.
Very good. And on to the mayor's report. Please do not consider my less-than-warm feeling about the name of the park to be in any way construed as not being supportive of the parks and all of the parks. But I look forward to it being open this fall. We expect it to be installed late August, so probably in the middle of Tiblo Days, end August, week before.
I don't want to give a date.
Yeah, that never is a good thing. And then, the... What are you calling the addition at the farmer's market or at Centennial Park?
Yeah.
Is it going to go through the naming process, too? No, so it's just gonna be the pavilion?
Like, at our parks, we have sheltered...
Wow. Imagine...
It's the pavilion at Centennial Park.
Now, that sounds very nice. That's quite a name. It's all in presentation. I would like to make mention that the cemetery is very well-kept. It's been beautiful for a lot of families have gone out of their way to make mention of how nice the cemetery looked, not only at Memorial Day, but the last couple of weeks. It's dry here, and our cemetery continues to look very nice and been very well-maintained. The mowing, contractors mow very good. They may not trim and blow off headstones, but at least they knock down the grass as far as they can. I understand Glass Cat is gonna have their grand opening on Thursday evening as well, centered around the, or one of their grand openings. Is that right, Emily? Yep. So another new business to our community. Please continue to support them and all the new businesses around town. It's exciting to see we're considering a lot of these things that other communities around here have considered with street dining or outdoor dining on public property. There are areas of the city that can do this on private property, too, so we have to continue to be flexible with whatever we're considering. Other parts of the community are, for example, Twisters, that's a private parking lot, private area, that would be able to do things differently. So those are things that need to be considered, or at least addressed during that, I mean, the differences and the nuances of that. We're not blessed with the space that a lot of places have in those areas, and so it is gonna take a lot of special attention. Tiblo Days is quickly approaching, the end of August, 24th, 25th, and 26th. I'm looking forward to having a great mayor's banquet. Looks to be exceptional, one of the best in the last 10 years. Will pale in comparison to future mayor's banquets, I'm sure, but I've enjoyed being a part of those. If anyone has any questions about Tiblo Days, please reach out to Emily or Megan. Yes? Yep, planning meeting on the 12th of July. Saw that mentioned in our paperwork, so very good. Other than that, I stand for any questions for the good of the cause.
Do we want to mention that the city offices will be closed?
Oh, yes. City offices will be closed on Monday, July 3rd, and Tuesday, July 4th. Just Tuesday, the 4th. It'll be open on Monday, the 3rd. Wow, this is exciting territory here. So Monday, they'll still be open here, and Tuesday closed, and back open for business on Wednesday. Our trash pickup will be delayed at least a day this next week. Hopefully, that's all. If you have delays in your trash pickup, please feel free to call on Wednesday to the city clerk's office.
No on Thursday?
Ah, yes, it won't be delayed until Thursday, so call her on Thursday. Other than that, seeing nothing else, we're adjourned.
Take some time off, won't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, you...